You have a motion please to come out of executive?
So moved.
Mrs. Brooks, second, and Mrs. Shields.
Please rise. Well, I'm so. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming. We have no presentations this evening, so we'll begin right with the public discussion. During the course of the board meeting, the Rockaway Township Board of Education offers members of the public an opportunity to address issues regarding the operation of the Rockaway Township Public Schools. The board reminds those individuals who take this opportunity to identify themselves by name and address and to limit their comments to items listed on the agenda and to items directly related to the operation of the school district. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered and are responsibly forthcoming if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged and will not be responded to by the board. Students and employees have specific legal rights supported by the laws of New Jersey. The board bears no responsibility nor will be liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of the legal rights of those affected or identified in their comments and be aware that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. May I have a motion please to open to the public discussion?
So moved.
Mrs. Brooks. And Mrs. Smith. Does anyone from the public who wishes to address the board please come up? If not, may I have a motion please if someone came out? I just, I'm sorry, I thought somebody was standing up. If not, may I have a motion please to close to the public?
So moved.
Mrs. Shields?
Second.
Mrs. Brooks. Moving on to communications. Any additional communications, Mrs. DeCarlo?
No, there is none.
Thank you. Moving on to approved minutes of November 6th. Now have a motion please.
So moved.
Mrs. Brooks. And Mrs. Cherica. For discussion on the minutes. Roll call please. Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherica?
Yes.
Mrs. Helford?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezzet?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Souney?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to superintendents report. Rockaway Township.
Good evening. Thank you. Good evening, Rockaway Township. I'm pleased to share our fourth Class III officer has been hired and is in the process of completing his training. Once he begins, we will have filled four of the five openings we had at the start of this school year. I would like to thank our local police department for their partnership. They continue to be very supportive of our work. We conducted our annual family conferences across our schools last week and I want to thank the community for such high rates and attendance at the conferences. We are better together and as a school community, we are committed to building and maintaining healthy partnerships with our families. These conferences are an important time for families and teachers to sit down and share about how each student is progressing in their learning. As I know, the conferences can at times feel rushed. If a family ever desires additional information, please do not hesitate to reach out to a teacher directly for a follow-up conversation. Our teachers are 100% committed to ongoing communication with families and I very much appreciate their professionalism and dedication to our students and families. As a reminder, I will host the third and final Strategic Planning Community Forum December 3rd here in the Copeland Cafeteria from 7:00 to 8:30. The format for this forum will be slightly different than the first two. During this forum, I will invite participants to engage in more whole group discussion about goal areas and then we will break out into teams to begin crafting goal statements. These goal statements will begin to describe what successful attainment of the goals will look like over the next three-year period. After this forum, I will conduct a listening tour during the month of December where I will spend a full day in each of our six schools, meeting with both teachers and students. During these meetings, I'll be getting their feedback about the goal areas and what they would like to see prioritized in our work over the next three years. Lastly, I could not be more excited about my recommendation regarding the two appointments to the district's leadership team on the board agenda this evening. Melissa Lewis and Stacy Wisnewski are proven leaders in our community who have both demonstrated over time their commitment and dedication to our community. They are student-centered, service-oriented leaders and they have my full confidence as they move into these new roles. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the Township?
Actually, regarding the strategic plan for the December 3rd, is it possible to reach out to different communities that we have with it? Like the Greenbrier, Fox Hill, and then the other families, other developments in town? Because last time we had 20 and I thought we have really good stuff going on with this and I would just love to have a broader scope for the next one if we possibly can.
The short answer is yes. I'll need to do a little bit of research. Maybe it's through the connections with the Rotary about how best to make some of those initial contacts, but the communication strategy and the advertisement flyers are created. So it's really about just getting the right connection points to some of them. So to other board members or to the community, I welcome that feedback.
Excellent.
And so, sure. We had a great one today. It all people saw. Oh, you didn't? Oh, David Sir was in today. Yes, people see. Oh, that was okay. Something to look forward to.
It's not coming in the mail though. Where is it coming?
Drive by, walk away. They didn't admire it.
Okay, thank you. Moving on for the business of the dispatch report.
Good evening. The operations committee met with Eric Boe from Land Associates last night to discuss the projects that we would like to complete this upcoming summer. The two major projects are replacing the parking lots at TBO in Stony Brook. Eric Boe also wrote a checklist for us to share with the Dwyer PTA on the necessary steps for installing the playground. Dr. Trenamian has reached out to Mr. McGovern to set up an initial planning meeting with the Playground Committee to discuss their choice of design and the process to follow for installation. I am nearly finished with the ASSA, our application for state aid, and the enrollment has grown district-wide by 70 students from October 2018 to October of this year. Thank you.
Any questions here, Mrs. DeCarlo? The 70 students, do they seem to be in one setting area? Is it one school or are they spread? Are they spread pretty much throughout the quad elementary?
I would have to look that over again, too.
Moving on then.
Good evening, members of the board, and hello, Rockaway Township. Rockaway Township has had several faculty selected to present at upcoming conferences. We encourage our teachers and staff to share their successes and their expertise within the learning communities as they participate in. With that, several faculty members have been selected to present at two upcoming conferences here in New Jersey. Our character education team from Copeland Middle School has been asked to present how they utilize technology to help manage, track, and support social and emotional learning within Copeland at the upcoming New Jersey Educational Computing Cooperative, NJCC, meeting on December 13th. They will present their use of panorama education as a means to support their goals. Additionally, we have four presenters selected to present at the upcoming NJCC Annual Conference in January. Ivan Coleman, future-ready read-alouds. Vanessa Waxman, classroom web tools you should try in your classroom. Joey Starkwell, infusing technology for differentiation, engagement, and efficiency. And the character team from Copeland Middle School will be presenting the Social Emotional Learning Dashboard at that conference as well. This week, Holly Chopak and Melanie Brown from Words of Advice Literacy Consulting are working with our K-5 teachers as part of their ongoing training and reading workshop. They are focusing this week on conferring with readers and the finer points of learning from students so that they may understand how to teach them most effectively. The sessions are interactive and always consist of demo lesson where our teachers watch and critique the trainers as they work with our students. We are also proud to introduce a series of family nights once again. Over the next few months, you will see the following family nights available for signup. Thursday, November 21st, Family Science, Grade II. That one is full. That went out last week. Thursday, December 12th, The Hour of Code for Grade V. Thursday, February 6th, Family Science in Grade III. Tuesday, March 24th, Family Science for Grade IV. And a date to be determined in April for Family Math and STEM in Grades 5 and 6. These will all have a limited enrollment, so parents will be notified when the registration opens for each night. Our November workshop closed out within a few hours and we've created a waitlist in case there are changes to the initial participants. We look forward to seeing you at these events. Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Pagan? If not, committee reports?
Mrs. Brooks? As Mrs. DeCarlo mentioned, we met yesterday evening. Eric from Land and the Operations Committee would like to make sure we edit over page 10 under Finance Number 4. We recommend that we do that to get the Stony Brook video block march.
Anyone else?
Education Committee? We met on November 11th and we talked about many of the things that Mr. Pagan has spoken about in his address curriculum. Some of the things that we not talked about were, we talked about the implementation of the handle of care, extensive training, we're working with that within the district. We got a preview of the Standards Vision Report cards and the dashboards before the parent conferences and the final pieces to the Standards Vision Report card license that will be on the website. And we also talked about the curriculum updates with math media, library media, and music. And also, we talked about our budget process next year regarding the RCA.
Other committee reports?
As far as the Policy Committee, there are nine policies and one regulation that I'll discuss in more detail for first read. During the Policy Committee meeting that was on November 12th, we discussed Policy 2330 homework, which is a policy that wants to continue to be a discussion or is recommended to continue at future policy meetings. In addition, we discussed Policy 4219, Commercial Driver's License, Controlled Substance, Alpha W Use Testing, looking for some minor clerical revisions, so this is not up for a first read either. In addition, we reviewed Regulation 0155, Board Committees, and that's being worked on. Regulation 3218, Use, Possession, or Distribution of Substances, which is mandated and that's also being worked on. And Regulation 4218, Use, Possession, or Distribution of Substances, which is mandated and is also being worked on.
We've worked here and worked out the policy file. I'm on the table for ten.
Sure. And there was one more thing. We did ask the questions of the Policy Committee as far as determining a plan for 2020. Should this current Policy Committee want to do that? The consensus was we should wait for a new Policy Committee to determine what the actions will take.
And that was relevant to, relative to the discussion about how are we going to get through all of these policies and the corrections inside?
Correct, yes.
Thank you. That's all of our committees except for negotiations with the bus drivers. And if you have a date, we are meeting on December 3rd. So the board and the Bus Drivers Association will be meeting then. Any questions for any committees before the call? Not? Moving on then. Recommend the report action beginning on page 4 and ending on page 6. That law, no discussion. This stuff is from TAD in Executive Session. May I have a motion please?
So moved.
Second. Mrs. Helford. Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherica?
Yes.
Mrs. Helford?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezzet?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Souney?
Yes.
Motion passed. Motion passed. And congratulations to Mrs. Brooks.
Thank you very much. This is Mrs. Wisnewski. Sorry. Could you like to come up and say a few words to Mrs. Lewis, which I have to first? Thank you.
Good evening. I am so honored to be appointed as Director of Special Education for the Rockaway Township School District. Special education has always played a part of my life, both personally and professionally. I had the privilege of serving as a special education teacher for 14 years before becoming an administrator. Prior to joining the Rockaway Township District in 2017, I served as the Vice Principal and the Director of the Child Study Team in Freedon Township. I am thrilled to continue my career in Rockaway, serving the entire district to ensure all our students are getting the education that they deserve. I recently saw a quote that stated, "Special education doesn't mean that a student is incapable of learning. It means that they may need different supports in order to succeed." Thank you to the Board of Education, my fellow administrators, the KDM staff for your support in my new endeavor. To the KDM community, thank you for the privilege of serving as your principal. I have truly enjoyed every day and look forward to continuing to work with our students at KDM as well as the rest of the district. Thank you so much and I look forward to continuing this journey with Rockaway Township. Thank you.
I would like to start by extending my sincere gratitude for the opportunity to stand before you today. I would not be here if it weren't for the people that I'm fortunate to be surrounded by, many of them here tonight. First, my two daughters, who always keep me on my toes, my husband, who's also a school administrator, and my parents, who are both retired educators. You can only imagine our dinner conversations. I cannot move forward without thanking Alfonso Vanello, the Principal of Copeland Middle School, who has guided me, supported me, and mentored me throughout my time here at Copeland. He has taught me the importance of balance, attention to detail, the value of relationships, and perseverance. He has a saying, "We're better together," and I truly believe that and it guides me every day. I'd also like to thank the administrative team in Rockaway Township for making me feel like part of the family from day one. I would like to thank Dr. Trenamian as well. Last year, he was part of a central office leadership team that led a group of district employees entitled "Aspiring Principals." I want to note the book that we read as a group entitled "The Five Dysfunctions of a Team." This shifted my focus on leadership to think consistently in the mindset of team. As an educational leader, understanding the elements and critical role of the team mindset is essential. In reflecting on this exciting opportunity, two pieces of this reading resonated with me. First, the establishment of trust, which I take extremely seriously. And second, demonstrating my commitment. This is a tremendous opportunity, one that I take with great joy, excitement, and passion. I'm committed to Rockaway Township and look forward to embarking on this journey with the staff, students, and the community. Thank you.
I start with the HIV determination, beginning on page 6, ending on page 7. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Brooks?
Second.
Mrs. Shields?
This will be affirming of all four of the hips that are there. The two unconfirmed, the two confirmed.
Correct. So the motion will be that we are going to be affirming 20193 and 20194 as unconfirmed, 20195 confirmed, and 20196 confirmed. May I have a roll call? Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherica?
Yes.
Mrs. Helford?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezzet?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Souney?
Yes. Motion passes.
Moving on to education, beginning on page 7 and ending on page 8. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Shields?
Second.
Mrs. Brooks? Board discussion?
I just love seeing the family nights. I know we did a few last year and I just love that they're back on the calendar for this one.
And they closed out almost immediately last year as well. Is there any way to, I don't know, to increase? I mean, is the question staff or space or not having more so that some of the members have been closing out?
No, it's something that we're seriously considering. I know it's come up in the community planning meetings also as something that we value. So we're definitely investigating, adding to that. As we move through the next budget process, that'll be something we consider very, very strongly as well. But we'll see if we can make it work with this year as well.
Have I even on a weekend? I hate to, you know, I don't, I'm not saying you have to, but just as an option. I mean, not everybody is calm, let's say in Rick. There are families who want to do something together as a family on Saturday. Get a staff to do that. Any other comments from the board? If not, I can open to the public. If anybody has any questions or concerns about education. Section. If not, roll call please. Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherica?
Yes.
Mrs. Helford?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezzet?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Souney?
Yes. Motion passes.
Moving on to Special Education, beginning on page 8, ending on page 9. May I have a motion please?
So moved.
Mrs. Brooks?
Second.
Mrs. Cherica? Board discussion? If not, I can open to the public. If anybody has a question or a comment about special education. Roll call please. Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherica?
Yes.
Mrs. Helford?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezzet?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Souney?
Yes. Motion passes.
Moving on to Administration, beginning on page 9 and ending on page 9. I have a motion please.
So moved.
Mrs. Brooks?
Second.
Mrs. Smith? Board discussion?
May I just ask for an explanation of what number one is to the education culture?
Yes, we will be using Sussex County to transport some of our special ed students. We'll send them to transportation.
Anyone else? Do you have a question regarding the YMCA? Are the lines of communication open? I know that the parents have addressed us about concerns they have with doing their application yet for two years. So have most of the issues been addressed with them? Have you heard of any additional ones?
I have not heard of any recent issues, but we can commit to following up and maintaining. We should, with most of our partnerships, maintain my annual check meetings to ensure quality of partnership. So we can set that up.
That would be great. Thank you.
One question about that. Would the House will send out a survey to all the parents that are using the YMCA to gauge any their feedback on it as well?
I can certainly bring that as an item to a meeting with them and certainly ask that we would like to see that as evidence for continuing the partnership.
Perhaps the YMCA should send out a survey?
That was my intention, yes.
Any other questions? I can open to the public if anyone has a comment or concern? One second. May I have a motion please to open to the public?
So moved.
Second. Mrs. Shields? Mrs. Brooks? Please.
Just thinking about 3572, I hope. So I just, I was listening to some of the commentary regarding the YMCA. Offices still exist. The staff members that have the issues still do exist. They still do work there. Probably better serve to see if the parents have taken their kids out of the YMCA. They did serve them in hospital. I realize that this is not, you know, when it comes to what happens in the school, it seems like there's a major separation between the YMCA and, you know, let's say, the principal of the school. And you don't have much control, but these are still our children. And passing all the service to the YMCA, which pretty much not responding to parent complaints and parent concerns, I don't think is going to be very useful decision to keep them. And so I know kind of all lots right now that this is really moving contact and things thin, but I just want to put it out there that this is something that's serious. So something that's impacting children there and it really should be looked at more than just going to the director. He's continuously not responding.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, may I have a motion please to close the public?
So moved.
Second. Mrs. Cherica? And Mrs. Helford?
May I ask a question, Mrs. Souney?
Yes.
I'm assuming this is specific to the Dwyer program?
Yes.
Has Mr. McGovern been made of your patients and has he had any trouble? I know he's here.
I don't think this is the correct form for that, that conversation you've had. If you can follow up, please. Any other board comments before we do a roll call? If not, may I have a roll call? Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherica?
Yes.
Mrs. Helford?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezzet?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Souney?
Yes. Motion passes.
Moving on to Finance, beginning on page 10, ending on page 11. May I have a motion please?
So moved.
Mrs. Brooks?
Second.
And Mrs. Shields? Questions? Discussion of board? I signed up on the registered status yesterday for a board amendment. And this also includes the rolling of the, this would be the study we're going to do, the parking lot preliminary lines and having a late fall permits.
I'd also like to note that the surveys are good for roughly a decade. That means that for you, it's not like a large chunk of money, but it's something we can use over a very long period of time for any additional projects.
I can open to the public. If anyone from the public has a comment on Finance? If not, may I have a roll call please? Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherica?
Yes.
Mrs. Helford?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezzet?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Souney?
Yes. Motion passes.
Moving on to Policies. May I have a motion please?
So moved.
Mrs. Brooks?
Second.
Mrs. Shields?
Mrs. Smith?
Okay, the first policy that is up for first read is Policy 3218, Use, Possession, or Distribution of Substances. This came out of a policy alert number 218 and it is mandated. There is a similar-looking policy in the 4000 series as well. Policy 4218, Use, Possession, or Distribution of Substances, which is also mandated. And both of them came out of the policy alert number 218 from Strauss Esme. And both of them also will have regulations. Policy 3372, Teacher Staff Member Tenure Acquisition, along with Policy 3373, Tenure Upon Transfer or Promotion. And Policy 3374, Tenure Upon Transfer to Underperforming School, have all come out of the audit that we recently had conducted and they were identified as missing from an update that occurred in August 2013. The changes for what is added in here is that it provides guidance as per the Teach New Jersey Act, which is the Teacher Effectiveness and Accountability for Children of the New Jersey Act. And these are all recommended policies. Since I already mentioned Policy 4218, Use, Possession, or Distribution of Substances, I will move on to Policy 6510, which is Payroll Authorization. This policy was brought to our attention as we looked at the next policy, 6511, Direct Deposit, which is something that was recommended if it's applicable in the district and is a policy that we are implementing. So the payroll authorization happens to be mentioned. It's just up for a readout. The next policy, 7425, Leg Testing of Boyhood Schools, is something that the school district has already been doing. It's already mandated to be done. The policy was identified as one that was missing from our audience, so it made sense to add that policy in. Last as far as policy, seven five two three, school district provided technology device to pupils. And this policy came out of the new chrome book initiative, and we had legal look it over extensively and received advice from them as well as to how we could make it best meet the needs of our school districts. Uh, following that, we have one regulation that is required to be adopted by the board that we're looking for, um, five one 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 eligibility of resident, non-resident pupils, uh, which had already been revised. It's just a matter that we need to adopt it. Are there any questions?
I do have one. Our policy of the seven five two three, the school district provided technology devices to pupils. There's two things that possibly could contradict one another. And so I just wanted to bring it to your attention. I'm not sure what's in it about it. Under the provisions, uh, number four on page one of the three pages says, any school district providing technology device loaned to a pupil must be returned to the school district in the condition it was initially provided to the pupil, considering reasonable use and care by the pupil. So that's number four. But then when you go to number eleven, which is something that's bold, the board, the school district administration reserve the right to allow students to retain the device at the end of a pre-described term in their school career in coordination with the device replacement cycle, which is one that the device has no market value. So four says it needs to be returned, but eleven says, but you're going to keep it. So I just wrote that for your discussion. You might, you know, try to something I'm missing.
I don't know if there's anything, I'm sorry. Man?
Of course.
Um, I don't know if there's anything that you're necessarily missing. I think you pointed out an important distinction. Um, and between this first read and second read, I think it's worth us looking potentially updating the language of number four. So it does on the other side here. Um, because the language of number eleven is our expressed intent. Um, and so everything that's been revised in this policy is to set us up to get to a point where upon graduation from Copeland, the device that the students have had for the three years does become theirs, uh, is gifted to them. So, um, we might like to, we likely would want to potentially create some new language for number four, um, which I can certainly pursue.
And you might also want to include something there. A child reads the district.
I was just going to ask if this could possibly pertain to a child reading a district and maybe needing to clarify.
So I didn't know if you were missing a qualifier or that, so to me, because if someone reads, let's say, in seventh grade, do they have the right to take that from them?
And so, good question. A question I didn't want you to back, is that alongside of this, I am beginning to work on updating this regulation, which will have a lot more detail around P structure and things like that. That may be something that we could contemplate in the regulation language.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions?
No, that was just my notice, because we also have at the end, uh, the second to last paragraph, we often then clarify again that this device will be given at the end of the cycle, it will be pushed from us. So, it's just a little. But I think the point is, I think that bullet point is really for, in me. Thank you.
What else? If not, I can open to the public, policy section. Not, may I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Chirico?
Yes.
Mrs. Hellebord?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Sally?
Yes, motion passed. So they will be on the agenda in December for second. Moving on to old business. Any board members have old business?
I do.
Okay.
I had mentioned that I went to an A R O D meeting and told the young men they had any concerns or questions, and they both come back to me. Well, they did. Uh, we recently had a STEM day at K D M, and one of them was very concerned that we're using plastic straws for the sake of the turtles, so. Told them I would bring it up to the attention of the board and.
Okay. So I, it's not only with the turtles, I don't believe, the whole plastic straw.
It's concerned with the turtles. Uh, it's concerned.
Yes. Mr. Carla, do you want to uh look into that or perhaps get that into the boy scouts?
Yeah, we certainly looked into speaking to Charles about, um, either going to paper straws?
Oh, well, it's just, let.
Or going to no straws?
This was during the STEM day, like some of their supplies that they were using were plastic straws.
Right, well, I know the movement in the country is hard work, it's was, uh, so that's why I thought maybe more than just the turtles.
Yeah, I can certainly, uh, in the conversation, we can see if there's any concern with those other than the plastic straws.
Thank you. And I'll, please go back to you when you see your cup scouts.
I will, I will.
Please look at that, you're taking diligence and it's being looked into.
Thank you.
Any other old business?
It's always like old and new.
So segue into old and new.
Go ahead. So, um, I actually have the privilege of being the board member of the Future Ready Committee, and we had a, our second meeting on Monday at Dwyer. And I have to start off by saying, first of all, the first meeting, I was so overwhelmed with the process and everything, and the administration and the staff, and specifically Vanessa and B bars and our I T department has done a tremendous amount of work to simplify it and make not only the process to get Future Ready, um, up and running. They really have embraced the fact that everyone's starting to think about the board as a mindset. It's not so much about getting the uh, the participation trophy, right, that we're a bronze or a silver school. It's really a mindset to drive our strategic plan and to have everyone in the room really talk about the type of information that they were reviewing and looking at, um, compared to other applications, actually. And getting the sense that some people aren't necessarily doing it just for, you know, the sticker, but, um, really driving the conversation about a bigger mindset. And I'm really excited to continue to see the process, and I just want to, um, I feel safe speaking on behalf of all of this. Thank all of the administrators and the I T department, because this is an undertaking and everyone just seems excited and we're doing a really awesome job.
Thank you. Anyone else? Old, new, new? Mrs. Hellebord? Mrs. Smith?
Well, I, I guess mine is kind of old and new. Um, it's regarding the Rockaway Township Education Foundation meeting that was going to be last Thursday. It's actually this week. It was moved to Thursday, and it is, um, in the Copeland faculty room at seven o'clock.
Thank you.
Uh, yes, um, I recently was asked to, uh, by New Jersey School Boards to be part of their legislative committee. And they are meeting on the seventh of, uh, December, on a Saturday, and, um, I'm anxious to, um, be part of that discussion and bring, um, information, um, fresh hot, uh, hot off the press, um, back to our Rockaway township. Um, some of the things that are going to be discussed is, um, that vaccines, transmissible illness, um, there's a census presentation, and then, um, several things regarding, um, legislative updates. So I'm looking forward to the interesting discussion.
So on the eleventh meeting, we'll be able to get.
Yes, yes.
Great, thank you. Anyone else?
And then as far as new business, um, I'm not sure if I mentioned the next policy meeting will be coming up next month, December the tenth at five o'clock, um, at the board office. In addition, um, I recently attended the Indian County, um, New Jersey School Boards meeting, um, and at that meeting, the focus was actually hints on our effectiveness as board members. Um, so they went through different strategies and suggestions, um, to help you be more cohesive. Um, in addition, we were presented with, um, two items that are going up regarding legislation. One was regarding the assessments changes. I know, um, Ms. Hellebord has spoken to that a little while ago. And we were encouraged, um, to have the superintendent and other board members to reach out to make public comments, um, with their opinion regarding changes, um, in assessments. In addition, um, coming down the line is also healthcare reform, um, and this is something that may end up impacting negotiations, and we were told to keep an eye out to find out what's happening.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, I can open to the public. If anyone from the public wishes to address the board. Okay, one second, please. May I have a motion, please, to open to the public?
So moved.
Second. Mrs. Shields? Please come on up. Oh, I'm sorry. Don't rush up. He didn't see you, that's what happened.
Uh, Brian Adams, our T E A, and it is American Education Week, and today we honor our E S Ps, our education support professionals, our secretaries, staff assistants, and custodial maintenance, including our bus drivers as well, who are the front lines of, uh, education. And, uh, we thank them for all they do for our students. And also thanks to Studenbrock for coming out today.
Um, my name is Marie Vidal. I am at K D M. Okay, sure. I just need your name and the address, basically, my address. Okay, my name is Marie Vidal. Do I have to sign in here? Sorry. Um, nineteen Sunnyside Lane in Newfoundland. And this is my second board meeting ever, and it's my first time addressing the board. Um, so I think I'm speaking at the wrong time, but that's okay. Um, so I have some questions about the homework policy. Um, I heard, so I just want some clarification. The current homework policy is that homework is at the teacher's discretion. Is that correct? So you can ask all your questions, and then I'm going to ask, um, Dr. Camat, he wants to respond to you. So the first question is. So my first question is, is the current homework policy that homework is at the teacher's discretion? So that's my first question. Um, going on, I heard that there is talk about, I guess it's policy two three three zero about homework, which would, um, create a district policy that would have ten minutes of homework per grade plus twenty minutes of reading. I don't know if this is a rumor, I don't know if this is true, so I wanted some clarification on that. Um, that policy to me is very concerning. Um, you know, I think all the parents and teachers, everyone involved wants success for our children. We want them to be prepared academically. We want them to succeed. Um, but I know for my kids, and I know for a lot of kids, and I know some educators know this, and that, um, our kids are being squeezed and that they need more free time, they need more exercise, they need, need more time outside, they need more time in nature. And in school, this is just not happening, and so to implement a policy that would give them homework after school, um, you know, it squeezes it even more. Now they're not doing that in school, they're being, uh, have to sit down, they have to be structured for so many hours, and now after school, now they're doing it with their parents at home. Uh, I desperately want my kids to be more active, and what could be ten minutes of homework for one kid could take an hour, two hours for another kid at home with their parents. Um, so I guess my question is, um, you know, I'd love for us to join Finland. I'd love for us to join Denville. I'd love for us to have a no homework policy for elementary school. That would be fantastic. Um, I'd love to see more, uh, free time during the school day as well, but I guess I'm just talking about homework right now. So I guess my second question is, what prompted this new homework policy? And, um, are there any other policies currently in the district that take into account free time for our kids and their physical and emotional health regarding, in relation to that? So. Those are your questions?
Well, first of all, excuse me, thank you for coming out today. Um, I think I got most of your questions, so let me give it a first shot. First, let me start with the last question about what prompted it, and let me, you know, also offer a couple of clarifiers. Specific to policy, so very technically speaking, we do have a homework policy that's up on our website. Uh, but to your, you did mention in there that you have heard that that policy, and you put the number at two two three zero, is something that is being reviewed. It's not yet up for first read because the policy committee is, does want to do more research and does want to look at the language before we move forward with it. But it's very much on our radar to update the policy of it. Now, in terms of what prompted, um, the conversations, policy was prompted from going back to last school year. A lot of the feedback is administration heard from family nights, um, in community forums, was there was a lack of synergy. There was a lack of consistency across our district, in particular in the elementary schools, for how homework was being implemented and what the expectations were from grades to grades and schools to schools. And so our initial foray, um, into this, which happened in September of this year, was to try to create some normalcy across the district. And at that point, we put out guidelines, not policy, but guidelines that are up on our website for what we would, we would ask our teachers to stay within. So to your other question about discretion, teachers do not have the discretion to simply assign as much homework as they would like at any point of their life. We'd like everyone to get on the same page, and those guidelines were meant as a way to begin to move the district so that everyone was more on the same page. In anticipation of adopting a policy this school year, that would also align with those guidelines. Now, there's an important element in those guidelines that refers to, um, the frustration level, if you would, that some students may have. So the point you just shared, ten minutes for one might be an hour for another. We're also trying to shift our culture across all of our schools in the community that ten minutes is ten minutes. And homework at the end of the day should not just run on to a point that it's a frustration or cause for angst in the home and for any reasons. The, the, the guidelines are, they're framed nicely, a vision for homework being simply there to, it's meant to practice. It's meant, it's not meant for new material, it's not meant to challenge, it's not meant to frustrate. And so to any family in the community who is having a child experience frustration with homework, I encourage them to reach out to the classroom teacher directly, express that concern, ask for additional feedback and guidance. And if you're in that situation at home, and that, those time limits have gone, then allow that student to stop doing those, those assignments at home. Um, there will not be, and we are not creating a culture in our schools where that will be penalized in our elementary schools in any way. Um, so I hope I got most of your points there. It's very much on our radar. Um, it's something that we see as a year-long process and, uh, um, something that we committed to do back in May of last year.
Do I respond again?
Typically, it's not usually a conversation, but I'm comfortable with one more response. Yeah, and then, and then I can also offer that we, I'm happy to sit with you. Um, and we can set something up as well. Okay?
Um, so I, I definitely appreciate, like, the time limit at home if a child's struggling, and that there shouldn't be any negative consequences in school. But what I've seen happen with my kids is sometimes, like, with the reading log, whether it was a reading log, for example, if they did not do the reading log, I talked to the teacher, they'd say, fine, don't do it. If I did not do the reading log, there might be a reward system in the classroom. And then the child is not getting a reward for completing their reading log, and therefore, it's not like they're penalized, but they are being excluded from the reward that the rest of the kids are getting. So that's, I appreciate that would be, um, considered at least. And I'm also just wondering if there's any chance, I don't, it sounds like there might, I don't know, what, is there any chance of having a no homework policy within our district?
Not something I can speak, um, to with a firm response at this point.
Yes.
I can, I can, I can commit to you to add that to our deliberations. Um, and I would, but I also, the other side, and to, I just want to also be candid on it. There's a reason the reading logs have gone away, because we want to get away from that piece to the piece. There's also a reason we've launched a hundred and twenty minute balanced literacy block in our elementary schools, K to four, this year, and that's because reading is so important. And so our ultimate vision for this work is that we are a district that is creating in our students a love of reading. And we do think we've made the shifts instructionally this year and with curriculum this year to align to that. It's going to take some time, so that students have more choice in their reading in school, which should make the reading less frustrating in the home, being more appropriately matched to the right books, so that they, when they do take that book home, again, it's not less frustrating for them. And so, you know, my hesitation with just running right to a no homework policy is that I do think practice, and I do think particularly practice with reading in those developmental ages of K through four and five, it's hugely important that our students, for the most part, are making that switch in third grade from learning how to read and to read to, to learning to read, to, I mean, reading to learn. Um, and so, you know, that's generally, um, to be transparent with you about my approach to it and the culture we're looking to create in our schools right now. And I will, uh, um, commit and, and know that this is something that's in process.
Thanks.
Sure.
Thank you. Anyone else who's progressing forward? If not, may I have a motion, please, to close the public?
So moved.
Mrs. Brooks?
Second.
Mrs. Smith? If not, may I have a motion, ladies, to adjourn the meeting at, uh, eight twenty-two?
So moved.
Mrs. Chirico, second? So, Mrs. Brooks, all doesn't favor? I have a, an integer, thank you for my comment.